We're on two minute delay.
Hey, what, no one moved for the next two minutes and they think that we're not here?
Maybe one minute left. They have one minute? It's one minute. I've been smacking.
All right, step to the pitch.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Start by congratulating our mayor-elect.
Thank you.
Spangler, Vance, here. Doobie?
Here.
Carrie?
Here.
Lee Master?
Here.
Norris?
Yes.
And Browning?
Here.
All those in favor of excusing the master, Norris, and Browning from the last meeting, say aye.
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 Any public comments? I appear to be. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes of the last meeting, say aye.
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 Any correspondents?
Yes, sir.
Special committee reports.
Planning committee met just before our meeting this evening. We had some paperwork to sign for Harvist Crossing. And then we discussed the old McNally building about the possibility of what we need to do moving forward. So it was decided council will meet there at six o'clock in two weeks from tonight and tour the building.
Anybody else have anything? Any old business? Any new business? Oh, you got old business?
Um. It's been brought to my attention several times about the Lake Road property going leading out to Lake Elma.
The porta potties.
Yeah.
It's on my list, too.
I'd mentioned speaking to the mayor just a little bit, a couple of times, wanted to know where this, where we're at with that. Um, the, the, the neighbors are really upset. Wanted to know, they wanted to be here tonight.
What is it, what's the issue?
Um, trash.
Oh, just an unkept place.
Abandoned cars.
Um, porta potties are hung everywhere.
Opens up a whole big can of worms and if you're gonna start talking about abandoned cars because they're.
Yeah, just, just wanted to know if there's something that the city could do to help, uh, maybe encourage the landowner to clean the property up. A lot of traffic goes down through there, a lot of out of state people visit Lake Elma and drive through Welkston, go past that property and they'd like for us to be able to address it somehow. I don't know what the answer would be. Um, but I told them that we would, we would bring it up tonight, talk, discuss that at some point and see if we can come up with some type of resolution for that.
It almost looks like a junkyard and don't you have to have a fence around the junkyard?
So there's a couple of issues there. If you, you want me to go into this? I'm sorry.
Yes, please, yes.
Um, so we've had a couple of issues with this property. We've, we've, we have addressed it in the past and we've, we've gone down this path with Randy before, um, back when Randy was still working for the city. Um, some of the issues we ran into is, um, if you go out there, A, it's not trash. All those vehicles belong to someone. Those are not junk vehicles. It's not like he's keeping a scrap here. Those are things, those are all, they all, they all belong to someone else. He's working on them for them. Um, he actually, he's in a very niche type of work. He does things that other people can't do. Um, like an older forklifts that people just can't work on anymore. He's the guy that you take stuff like that to because he fixes them. Um, now the porta potty businesses is something else that got added on from his wife. Um, she brought that business out there. Um, so that is, that is, there's two, two separate businesses there. Um, so I know some of those vehicles look like junk, but they're just older stuff. That's what he does. Um, so they sit there for a while because he struggles to find parts for him. He has to go to other junkyards and, and I'm not trying to defend it. I'm just telling you what it, what it is. Um, we have, we have worked to try to get him to clean it up. We had a resolution in place, um, that was put in by, uh, previous mayor and service director. They was gonna have him put a fence up, but the agreement was that they would put a fence up down the front, but they would leave the openings to where the parking area is and only put the fence where the grass is. But if you go out there, the grass is only like two ten foot sections. There was zero point in doing that. I mean, it was gonna fix nothing. Um, so I backed off and said, no, my stance when I was first, no, you gotta clean up the yard. This, you're not zoned for this. That area is not zoned for industrial. Um, that, that is meant to have like office space and stuff like that. Um, so then after Randy left, we had, Randy kinda on his way out, not much was happening with it. We got the new law director, uh, law, sorry, law services. Um, but he was actually representing the client before, um, before us. So now he cannot interact with the, with the situation again. So now I have to go outside and get additional outside legal in order to do anything with him. Um, and that's the, that's basically where we're at as far as addressing it goes.
What about code enforcement?
So the problem with it is that what code would he be violating? He's violating zoning. He's, he's not allowed to be there. That business isn't allowed to be there. It's a zoning issue, not necessarily, um, it's not really a code issue because if you go out there, there's not really junk out there. It's all equipment. It's all stuff.
I wouldn't care really what he does. He just cleans it up, number one, or number two, fence it off, eight foot tall fence where nobody can see it.
But next time we go out there, I'm saying, seriously, go out there and take, take a look at it. There's really nothing that needs cleaned. There's not like trash laying around. It's just vehicles and lots of them. And porta potties, and porta potties. But once again, there's really nothing to clean. If you look at it, it's not really dirty. It's just stuff and a lot of it. Um, so it's not really a cleaning issue. It's just a, an amount of stuff not in an area it belongs. Um, and I can't get into the legal side of it because I'm not a lawyer and unfortunately our lawyer can't speak to it. So there's not much I can tell you outside. I need to go get another lawyer to go after it. I gotta find someone who can help us with it.
Is it something that we could do as a city? Send somebody to visit him again and say, hey, look, here's what this needs to be done?
But what are you gonna tell him?
Uh, is there, is he breaking any type of code?
He's very, he's zoning is what he's breaking. He's violating.
They're ordinances though.
Those are ordinance.
So he's violating the zone. Well, yeah, it is an ordinance, yes, absolutely. But he, so the, he's not zoned to be where he is. The business is a legal business. There's nothing, there's nothing illegal about what he's doing. And there's nothing, like, he's not like polluting or anything like that that we know of. There's nothing I go after BPA wise. There's nothing.
So let me ask you this question. Without getting legal involved, is there anything we can do as a city to enforce or fix the issue?
I'd need to get a lawyer. That way I don't do anything to get my, to get the city in trouble.
And what can happen if you, you, you put a business that's in a place that it's not zoned to be? What's the, the consequences for that?
That's, literally it's legal. So you, you, you have to go after him to, to remove the business or change the business, um, which it's, it's all, it's all legal stuff. And, and I, and I'm not, yeah, I'm not a lawyer. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak out of turn or get the city in trouble with my words. So I don't wanna, we gotta get lawyers involved. We gotta get people smarter than me involved. Um, he's violating zoning. Zoning is what he's, that's the law he's breaking. If you wanna get under the ordinances, he's violating our zoning.
So if we open up that can of worms, are there any other issues in the city that would have to address at the same time?
So I'll tell you, we've absolutely gone after other businesses for this. There was a trucking business out there by the fairgrounds. He, he put a trucking business out there. We ran him out. We told him that did, you cannot do that. Um, he wasn't zoned for it and we ran, we, he left. He went back to MacArthur. Um, not that we wanna get rid of businesses, but at the same time, you can't put a trucking business in a residential area. Um, so we have gone after other businesses for this exact same thing. Um.
Are there any other pending issues in the city that would create a, a problem by us acting on?
So the one other one that we have, um, and I hate calling people out, but we, we are, we already took it to the zoning. Um, then he was unfortunately not available to come back to meet with you. Um, but Seth Manoring, his, his property, um, is violating, technically violating zoning also where he's at.
One on Pennsylvania Avenue?
The one on Pennsylvania Avenue. Um, because he has industrial equipment in a, in the downtown business, not downtown, it's, um, what's that one called? Community business.
Where they're parking their, those electric trucks there?
Yes. Yep. Technically that doesn't meet that zoning. Although the school bus is parked twenty feet away from him. That's the exact same chassis. Technically, he's not zoned to be where he is. Um, but we, uh, went through the zoning committee and they were sending it to city council because all he's doing is parking them. He's not working on them. He's not.
Right.
So we was gonna ask for a variance, a one-time variance, just while he's in the business to allow him to stay there. But he unfortunately left out. I think he does a storm chasing. Have you noticed the trucks have been gone for like ever? Um, so he was gone. So he, he didn't have the opportunity to come back yet, but we will at some point have to address him. Um, other than that, well, as far as I know, we don't have anyone else violating it. I'm sure there's something small that I'm not aware of. So I don't wanna.
In the meantime, while we, while we look at, at legal and that, can we send code enforcement people out to pay him a visit?
Absolutely. We, and we have, and I promise we have, I got a file on this place that you wouldn't believe. And we go out there all the time to take pictures.
I'm not trying to be hard to get along with. I'm concerned for the city though, at the image of the city that we would have for out of town, out of state folks that would drive by that, see that every day.
That's fair.
And, and like you was talking about cess trucks? Now what about where the tree trimming trucks park at McNally?
They do not. I ran about it.
That's industrial anyway.
That, that is industrial, but I got rid of them two years ago. They had no, when I.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
There's no contract for that one.
One of the first time I started as service director, um, I went in to see what the contract was. There was no contract. The agreement was that they would trim trees in town. So I asked, when was the last time they trimmed trees? Never. You gotta go.
Because then they were parking, and they were also parking at the one stop.
Yes.
Well, that's outside.
That's, that's not, I, I can't control that.
That's not in the city limits?
That's the gas station. So they, they're allowed, that's the truck stop. So yeah, yeah, I can't stop that.
If we could, um.
It is in the city limits though.
If we could address that quickly.
Yep.
So, I know, I know you said something about the smell of the.
He says sometimes there's a smell.
There shouldn't be a smell from the, there's porta potty. There shouldn't be sewage out there in this porta potty.
You're a hundred percent right.
Yeah, they should be clean.
Yeah, they should be clean sitting there. I will get, we'll go out there and, we'll go out there. We have, I haven't been out there in a while. It's probably been six or seven months since I've physically been on the property. Um, I'll get with Ryan. We'll go out there and make, pay him another visit. Um, and we'll, we'll have to secure a lawyer at this point.
Part of his property, he's encroaching on the neighbor. Uh, I've seen the survey on that property.
Do you know where the property line is? Yeah. So if you, if you look at that garage where the garage sits, the property line off the back corner of that garage, the property line is about ten foot out. John Jackson actually owns all the way to about ten foot of that garage door. Um.
That's between these two.
That is between them. That's the, that's, that's a civil matter, not a city. Um, but yeah, we will, let me get, um, it'll be next week, but next week we'll, we'll go, we'll pay.
Do you have any idea if, if we're not using Mr. Kirby who or other legal advice would come?
I'll probably ask Mr. Kirby for a recommendation, but I don't have someone.
Okay, great.
Okay, so Reepenhoff, we'll probably reach out to Reepenhoff and have him come.
Good, thank you.
So that welding shop was out there all those years illegally too, or no?
So it was, but we didn't have zoning back then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, zoning, zoning didn't take place. And then, so there was a huge gap. That, that business went out of business and we have maps of it. We actually, we went back through the auditor's page and pulled up the pictures. That welding business left. And it sat empty for years. It sat empty and then, then this guy moved in. So it's only been there for about four years when we look back to the page. It got, it started getting messy about five, five years ago now. It started getting messy and then obviously it's turned into what it is now.
I mean, I, if it's, if it's not, if it's zoned correctly and he's okay what he's doing, then I'm okay with it. Just put a fence up. But if he's not, then obviously.
He's definitely not zoned correctly.
Okay.
Without a doubt.
Can we, uh, force someone to put a fence on their property if it's zoned properly?
We can force him to move the business if.
We can force him to move the business.
If it's not zoned properly.
So you run into this weird thing and we ran into this with Reepenhoff. There, God, I hate, I hate talking legals. He'll get choked from wrong. We ran into this weird thing. We ran into this weird thing with it where once the business is there so long and allowed to be there so long, um, you really can't do it. You've accepted it.
Grandfather.
Uh, never use that word. Um, that is not a word. Never use that one. But once the business is there so long, it gets, grandfather gets us in trouble. We're not allowed to use that word. Um, the, uh, once the business is there so long. Um, once the business is there for so long, you've accepted it. Um, porta potty business absolutely has not been accepted. This has been there less than about going on two years now. That one we could absolutely.
Well, if you've been working on trying to get it and fix it, then.
That's it. That's why, that's our, we, we've been fighting this the whole time. That's our, that's the city stance on it. We have been fighting this nonstop. Am I correct? Yeah. But yeah, that's, we have been fighting it. And that's been the issue is, that's where Randy kinda pumped the brakes on it. He didn't wanna move forward and then we sent him notices. It kinda got, it got weird. We had to do an affidavit and it turned into a real hassle.
Just so I have something to let the neighbors know that, hey, we're working on it.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Well, on that piece of property, it reminds me, out on ninety-three, that body shop, I forgot the guy's name, down there by the trailer park.
Eusley?
Eusley.
Carl Eusley?
Yeah. At one time, that place was a mess and the city made him clean that place up and put up fences and stuff. Uh, we should be able to do the same thing with this guy.
We did it. We went after Brad Benson a while back. Um, his property with all the washers and dryers. We went after that one. He cleaned it up. He, you know, it looks nice now. He got rid of all that stuff.
Oh, yeah. Looks a lot better now.
Yeah, we, 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 we do. I don't think that all codes, uh, busy, busy, busy office. Um, but yeah, it's just, that one's been a tough nut to crack. That's, that's been a tough one for us.
While we're on that, on discussions of that, um, I received a call about Wisconsin Avenue. Um, I called to let Mindy know, um, where there's no parking on the right-hand side going north. Um, the lady at sixteen South Wisconsin Avenue, uh, has a handicap husband. Um, she's always parked across the street. And the late, um, the neighbor's complaining because she's always parking there and she has no business parking there. And she was asking if could possibly, um, put up a handicap spot where they go. They do have a garage, but he cannot get from the garage to the.
Let me go visit. I'll, I'll, I'll visit with said neighbor.
We actually sent, while you were out, we sent John Robb and Jeff Bates down there to take a look.
Okay. So you already got called in while I was out? I, I wasn't here last week.
Right.
I will personally go. I will, I will.
And the lady that can, doing the complaining is living in a shack across the street.
Just make sure you get me a Monday, on Monday I'll go visit this.
All right. Any more new or old business? I think we covered everything there. Give you legislation.
Third reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one and ordinance by the council of the city of Wilson, Ohio, adopting the Jackson County Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and declaring an emergency.
You mind if we go ahead and pass this as an emergency? It's just a way of the thirty days. We can send it back to them. Otherwise, we have to sit on it for another thirty days. They've been, they've been on us to get it back to them.
I'll make a motion to adopt and suspend the rule, or suspend rules.
Second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Motion to adopt and pass?
I'll make a motion to adopt and pass.
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Third reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five, a resolution awarding the water treatment chemicals, aluminum sulfate, aluminum sulfate bulk, chlorine, sodium bisulfate, sodium fluorosilicate and carbon in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid recommend, recommendation to prevent stagnant cell.
Motion to adopt and pass?
Vance?
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Third reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution awarding the water treatment chemicals bulk hydrated mine in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid recommendation to carbon.
Motion to adopt and pass?
I'll make the motion to adopt and pass.
Lee Master, I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Third reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, a resolution awarding the water treatment plant chemicals potassium permogana in accordance with the chief operator's letter of bid recommendation to water solutions unlimited.
Motion to adopt and pass?
Vance?
I'll second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, an ordinance approving additional preparations to the general civil fund, supplies, materials and maintenance and declaring an emergency.
Still want this to go to an emergency?
If we can, this is.
What's the twenty thousand dollars to pave what?
So, oh, you wasn't here last week. Um, yep, we'll cover it. Yep, we'll cover it. Um, so what it is, is down there next on the corner of where the old post office used to be, on the corner of Ohio and. Yep, right there. Um, make that, this is the discussion to make that into a parking lot. Um, we're gonna con, we, we got, we went out and got bids to pave it and we got bids to, uh, we, us doing the work. I have, I have a concrete crew now. To put the con, to make it in concrete. The bid to pave it was twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we can put the concrete in there for roughly, probably be about sixteen to seventeen thousand dollars using our own crew, which will last dramatically longer.
It's like counting the labor and everything too.
There's not counting the labor. That's our city people doing it. So that labor is, hey, any free labor, but regardless, we're paying it. Um, but it's our city crew doing it. Um, so paving it all the, putting, uh, concrete in all the way across, it'll go, um, we gotta work out an easement agreement with, uh, ERA to put a, basically a drive behind it and turn it down the alley. Um, and the reason for that is if we didn't do that, um, when you pulled into the spots, we'd have to either put the spots in straight, which will limit the amount of spots we could put in because you'd be tight. Uh, other than that, we can angle them and then we'll be, you'll be able to drive out behind ERA and turn down the alley.
But that's going to go right through the Lions Club Memorial Garden, right?
It, it will go right through the Lions Club.
Which the city has granted.
Absolutely. Though Charlie agreed to, I don't even know if that was passed by ordinance, but Charlie did agree.
It wasn't, it wasn't. No, it wasn't ordinance. We just agreed to it.
Yeah, it was just an agreement.
I don't think we ever.
No, we could go around it. We don't have to take it out. We actually could go around it. We talked about that. We went down and looked at it. The way it is, we could curb it and just go around it. Um, or we could relocate it.
But it matched a lot of bench and some grass.
It's just, it's mulch and some trees and, uh, five bushes or six bushes.
Yeah, I mean, the Lions Club last year spent like three thou, over three thousand dollars to get it all done and set up right and everything.
Yeah.
So.
But they were aware that we could sell that lot and they could put a building in there at any time.
I don't think so. I'm gonna look into.
Absolutely.
I'm pretty sure that.
Scott Kaufman, it was before, it was before me. Cause they made the agreement like a year or two before.
Oh, no, Charlie made that agreement. Yeah, yeah, that was.
And they came to council and everything about it.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, it was him. Yeah, he was, yeah.
I was, I was present. I was the one to kill.
Possibility of relocating that somewhere in the city.
We could, we have, down at the park across from, that's what we actually talked about.
Down by the depot would be.
Across from the depot. There's a park that's empty now because we took out, it was General Mills' park. We took that.
Oh, by the bowling alley?
Yes. We basically took that park out last year because General Mills had it all, all the, everything overgrown. They stopped maintaining it.
Would the city be able to eat the cost of reboot or replace it?
We could move the flowers, the trees. The mulch would probably get tore up in the move. Um, but everything else we could.
You gotta replace mulch pretty much every year anyhow.
Yes. Yep. So, but everything else we could.
They're like a bigger place for them anyway.
Yeah, everything else we could remove. We could move. And we could look at, we could look at curbing it and leaving it there. Um, or we look at just moving it down there, which would probably be the smoother option.
Well, can I ask, I mean, when you try to get, that you come to the Lions Club and address it with them too? Let them know what's going on?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
We'll have them come to.
Yeah, could the Lions Club come and talk to us and?
Well, they came and, well, it doesn't matter. We can do it either way. Cause we'll have one meeting and then the Lions Club.
I can, I can get with them and hash it out. I'll make, I'll make something happen. We'll figure it out one way or the other.
Yeah.
There isn't ordinance. But it's for the use and not giving the property.
Yeah, it's for the.
So just allow them to use it.
Use it to maintain, and we maintain the mowing and everything.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll work with them. We'll figure something out on it.
Okay. So, motion to suspend the rules.
Vance?
Give me one second.
I will.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
I'm gonna abstain.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
This is just to suspend rules, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt and pass?
Vance?
Give me a second.
Second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes, sir.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
I'm staying.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
No.
Yeah, still matters.
Okay. First reading of resolution number.
Was it really good?
It, it can't pass.
Was it four?
You have, how many do you have to suspend rules?
One.
Well, we're, we're down one person already.
We have five.
We're down one and I abstained.
So we have five.
So we didn't have enough to suspend rules. But we had enough to adopt and pass.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you didn't have enough to, it was the first reading, uh.
No, no, no.
Securing.
The second reading wasted.
So we would still have to wait.
You have to give one more reading.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Sorry.
So.
You lead for it.
First reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor's service director and any other necessary official to enter into an agreement with the county of Galia regarding the custody, supervision, confinement and board of prisoners.
Any sponsors?
Lee Master?
First reading of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty, a resolution of the city of Wilson authorizing the issuance of a bond of the issuer in a principal amount not to exceed one million three hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for sale to the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund of the state of Ohio to finance the cost of improvements to the issuer's wastewater system, pledging certain revenues from the issuer's wastewater system on a subordinated basis to secure the payment of the principal of in interest on the bond and authorizing execution and delivery of the bond and the trust agreement and other documents and the taking of other actions related to the issuance and the sale of the bond and declaring an emergency to preserve the health and safety of the public and to meet an ideal loan award date.
Any sponsors?
Vance?
Can I, can I mention something on this? We, I mean, we were talking about the charter. So this just came in today.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's a pretty, a bond's, uh, a, a big step on what, what was originally the loan agreement. The reason was because the, the suggestion is you're gonna go forty-five years versus a thirty-year payback. So that required a bond. And I understand they needed it as an emergency and passed by the tenth. My suggestion was, there's, there's a couple of things that they had wrong on what they sent. I think, uh, the trust document wasn't complete. They didn't send the attachments with it. And in fact, I don't think they've sent the trust document. The, um, bond had, uh, the county code in it instead of the, um, city codes. None of those are, are huge issues. Uh, the ordinance says that, um, that, that you're authorizing the mayor to execute something substantially similar to those documents. So the, the talk was whether or not we get everything sorted out now and get it all accurate or, or complete and then have a special meeting or whether you pass it now. We fix the issues that, that need tweaked, make sure that, uh, all of that's in place, still substantially similar and then the mayor goes ahead and signs it. If we can't do that, then a special meeting for you to undo this. Um, that, that would be your call then.
So the verbiage, the verbiage allows me to sign it once it's fixed. But this is, you guys agreeing to let me do it.
And if it can't be fixed, then, then it's not gonna be signed.
Could you do something like this? Accept tonight, subject to that language being corrected, giving him authorization to do that and giving us a certain timeframe?
So it does say substantially. So it'll, it'll be, it'll be correct when, when he signs it. But, but we don't really even have the language that needs correct because we don't have all of it yet.
They don't have all the documents.
I want to remind everyone, we can't do an emergency anyway. We can't suspend.
Why can't we?
What are you doing?
Oh, yeah. We do have enough. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have nothing. As long as everyone, everyone have to agree to it.
Well, we could just call an emergency meeting.
Or, but it'd be tomorrow. Oh, no, we got next week. It'd be next week. Yeah, we got till the tenth. So do you guys wanna do an emergency meeting next week after we get it fixed? Or do you wanna approve this one and let me make sure it gets fixed?
Well, that's what, that's what I was just saying. I would, I would be in favor of.
Letting fix it.
Going ahead and doing it now.
And I promise you, I will be the one to fix it. He'll, he'll be the one to make sure it gets fixed.
Subject to the language getting fixed. If it's not fixed, then we're not signing the document.
So those issues aren't really substantive? So, so you're good with the ordinance you have there? The, the concern is what if there's a problem with what we don't have? If there's a big problem with that, if there is a big problem.
Yeah, we don't.
And my suggestion is the mayor calls for a special media then.
Yeah. And I would like him, if he tells me it ain't good, I won't do anything. We'll come back. We'll, we'll have to do a special meeting. But if you guys are good with passing it the way it is, as long as he tells me it's good, we're fine. If not, then we're all.
And this is for what again?
So this is for the, uh, one point, the one point three million. Um, it's for the loan, the, for the, uh, New York Broadway. As I said, part of that four and a half million, this is the one point three million that we are on the hook for. Um, this is actually budgeted into the R cap. If you remember back when, who was, I don't know who was. Uh, this is actually budgeted into the R cap. If you remember back when, who was, I don't know who was you and you and, yeah, that's it. Um, when we did the R cap, this was part of the R cap approval. Uh, this is budgeted in. Uh, the problem with it was they sent it to us on a thirty-year note, which is gonna be about sixty thousand dollars a year. When I saw that, I about had a stroke. Um, I thought, where am I gonna budget in sixty thousand dollars a year? Um, so we pushed it to forty-five, which is gonna substantially drop that payment, um, which is much more palatable for us to be able to pay. And if we can pay it off early, there's nothing saying we can't pay that off, you know, faster than what. Um, but it's one of them things. I didn't wanna put us on the hook for sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, so we pushed it to forty-five years. That was the whole gist of it. That's what caused, that's what triggered this and.
So by their rules, then that puts it in with the bond.
So we can go with what Mr. Kirby said, and if it's not that way, then you can't sign it.
Yep, and I just won't sign. If he comes back and says, dude, don't do this, that's it, then we'll come, we'll have the special meeting.
Do we need to add language to this resolution that's being le- read, subject to attorney approval?
My, my suggestion would be not, and then if there's a problem that it can't be signed, come back with a special meeting.
Okay.
Um, and, and council didn't have any legislation approving it when it was a loan, when it was a thirty-year, was there?
No.
It was just an ordinance to apply for it.
Yep.
Okay.
So we don't, so there's nothing that needs undone then.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Lee Master?
Second.
Vance? Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
Motion to adopt and pass?
I'll make a motion to adopt and pass.
Second.
Vance?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Lee Master?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Browning?
Yes.
All right. So guys, I know we're gonna go into executive session here in a few minutes, so I will keep it short. Um, so a couple of things we're working on right now. Um, we're in the middle of getting, we're, it looks like we've pretty much secured fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, grant to work on, uh, Blamer, the park. Um, we're gonna focus, um, back towards the basketball court, um, getting it resealed, um, striped and getting a fence up around it. And that's kind of the goal for that part. Um, I'll tell you, if, uh, um, if anyone has ideas for, if anything else, someone wants to see there, any ideas, like, things we wanna try to move towards down there. We got a bit of money this year. We, we can put some money in that.
Are you doing tennis or pickleball thing? Is that, that seems to be more popular?
Pickleball seems to be.
That one, we're doing basketball courts there.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're putting the basketball court back. We could look at doing a pickleball court on top of the basketball court, um, but that's not in our current.
That'd be an argument on who wants to play what.
Yes, that'd be the issue. Yes, it would be, uh, we could split the, there's two there. We could split them. Um, we talked about doing the other set of basketball. We're gonna re-coat and stripe the other set of basketball courts also, um, separate. Um, it's actually relatively cheap. It's only eight thousand dollars to go.
Wasn't there a fence around that at one time?
There was, and so it got, uh, it got filled with vines and then it got, the fences got dilapidated and kids were messing with it. So they ended up, someone made the decision before my time to take it down.
That fence was there when we were in high school.
Yeah, it was all, it was all when I was in high school and finally someone just took it down. So I don't really, I don't know what administration, I can't speak to that. Um, but yeah, the goal is to put a fence back. I don't know if you ever played basketball on a court without a fence. It is miserable. Um, you spend halftime chasing your ball, so.
Is that court well lit without Blamer?
By well lit, you mean no lighting at all? Yes.
During the daylight hours.
It is, it is lit all summer long. Uh, from about seven in the morning to about eight at night. Um, so. We could look at, we could look at lighting it. I mean, that wouldn't be the worst.
I mean, actually, if the lights down on Blamer, then you could just go, one or two off the poles going facing down that direction.
It'd be pretty far. It'd be a long shot for light. But we could, we could look at lighting it. I mean, I, I.
Well, the street light there is close enough probably to.
Yeah, it helps.
Yep. We could look, we could look at lighting it.
So is this the city or McWeldon Beautiful?
It's always the city. So, I mean, anytime there's a grant, it's the city.
Okay.
Um, yep. So that's one thing we're working, I'm sorry, I lost my head. Yeah, that's one thing we're working on. Uh, we, we just, we started, we're going through that process there. We're working on getting that done. Um, the park, you probably noticed it kind of dragged out a little bit, the one down on, um, Broadway, uh, Kelly Lambert Park is, that project's kind of dragging out a little bit. Um, we had some issues with the contractor. They're trying to work through them. A lot of rain delays kept happening. Um, it's almost done. You probably saw the main equipment, the main parts are up now. They just gotta finish putting everything else on. I'm more hoping to have it done within the week. The vein of my existence, the red lights, um, you probably noticed the buttons are going in now. They got most of those in. They started calibrating the cameras. They also stopped for rain for the whole week, so they haven't been back. Um, once they come through and calibrate all the cameras, they got a few more buttons to put in and then that project is done. And that, that'll go live, so I'm hoping. I'd love to say within a month, but I also said that six months ago, so.
Then we don't write and check until we give us an estimate for the other.
Man, I don't even know. The, uh, no, I'm not. So, the, uh, um, but yeah, that's going. Uh, other than that guy, I don't, we're, we're starting to, you probably noticed we already, we're cut, taking down some trees this weekend, um, where Ohio Avenue makes that bend down at the end. Um, and comes back to, uh, Pennsylvania. There's two great big trees on the corner. Those will be getting taken down this weekend on Sunday, barring any weather pushing in. It's supposed to be good. And they're gonna start on that at seven o'clock Sunday morning. Those trees will get taken down. Um, we're really not, normally we've been taking trees down to do concrete work. Those are purely for safety reasons. When you pull up to that intersection, you have to pull almost all the way out there to see around those trees. Um, so what is taking the trees now? They, they've just, they've gotten too overgrown. It's bushes on them now. They're just, um, they're just not working. Um, other than that, we'll be starting sidewalk repairs here soon. That's our normal, you know, concrete summertime stuff. We'll be doing concrete, sidewalk repairs. Um, we started out, I started it two years ago. It was one of the first things we did. Um, we've been working on Pennsylvania, going all the way north to south. We wanted to get it all the way through. We're hoping this year that we're gonna be able to finish up the majority of it. Um, there's one section we gotta, down there by, I think Javon is anymore, Brennan's and, um, it's not Jevak either. I can't think what the other building's called now, but.
Compound Ministry.
Compound, yeah, the compound, that area. That sidewalk there, we're not doing right now, but it needs to be replaced. It's just busted up real bad. That one's gonna be kind of an expensive one, cause it's broad and it goes all the way from the building to the curb. Um, that one we're not doing this year. Uh, but we're doing the rest of it. We're gonna try to get the rest of it all the way down through. So we'll have sidewalks from north to south. And then we'll be, the next, the next main area we was gonna target is Broadway, um, to get sidewalks going east and west. Um, so people, at least we have good walkways through the main part of town. Um, I don't think, I don't think it's realistic that we'll get sidewalks through the whole town. I mean, maybe if I stay mayor for another eighty years. Um, but realistically, we, we do a couple hundred yards a year. I mean, it's just, it's, we're never gonna get it all. Um, we finished graveling. We're done with the alleys for the year. We might do a few touch-ups, um, here and there, but for the most part, we're done doing alley work. Uh, we did about fifteen thousand dollars with the gravel, um, and break as many as we could. So we, we were done with that. Now we're, that same tractor is also the tractor that does grass cutting, so we've already taken the box off and now we're cutting grass. Um, and that's how a tractor spends the whole summer, cutting grass. Uh, other than that, you know, any questions for me? I know we got other stuff to do tonight, so.
I'm sorry. Montgomery Trucking Project?
They were surveying.
It's, they're surveying, the project is, it's moving forward. So I, I don't know if the purchases happened yet. I can't speak to that. I can go on the auditor's page and look, I guess, but, um, it, that project is moving forward. They were surveying, they, they were putting pins into ground the other day when I was out there.
What about the sidewalks and the trees and the bricks on Ohio Avenue? These can be a safety hazard.
Oh, in the middle? So, I will tell you, we haven't been addressing them only because we got that, uh, two and a half million dollar grant coming next year. Well, it'll start in twenty-four, but twenty-five is when is that actually happening?
Yeah.
Those all get removed. Um, and that's why we didn't, we haven't really done anything, but there's, we're actually gonna go down there. We, we took out a tree this week in front of, um, can't think of that. Real nice lady has the shop there, um, next to Tangle's.
Chicken Sassy.
Chicken Sassy, yeah. That lady, we took, uh, she had a, a tree there. We took it out. I don't know if you saw, we cut down a tree there. Um, it was causing problems for her. And that brick there, we're gonna try to make that go down a little bit for her. Um, but we haven't really been messing with it. I know there's a couple spots in town where they're low and depressed and stuff.
Right.
Uh, A, honestly, we don't have anyone with the skill set to go in and really fix those, but we'd have to contract it or try to figure it out the best we can. Um, but that's all getting replaced, so it's all going away. So that's why it's one of the things that ain't worth spending.
It's just a safety hazard for people parking and getting out of their cars and.
It is, and it's very, and it just looks like, it looks bad. So it, it is part of the plan for that to go away though. All the sidewalks, they're getting all these sidewalks all the way through, so. All right. Nothing else? All right. Service Director starts on the eighth.
And that is?
Monday.
Who's the service director?
Oh, I'm sorry. Stacy Camp. I, yeah, I have one, one day for us. Uh, Stacy Camp. Um, yep.
My name sounds familiar.
Yep, good guy. Me and him, uh, he's a prior Marine. Um, uh, I know him from, me and him, uh, both on the, we're both board members down at the VFW. Um, good guy, real good with the books, which is the main thing I need. Um, so that's gonna be his main focus. And, uh, yep, you'll get to meet him. He'll be here for the next, uh, next city council. He'll be here.
Mr. Law Director?
I have nothing to add.
Auditorium, we have anything for auditorium to address?